Participants.
We'll have more.
You know, the world is a crazy place. That's my.
It's much crazier than this year.
The world is a crazy.
This is just insane year.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, yeah, I was telling my wife, the COVID numbers in the county are exploding at such a rate. And while they're exploding, we're getting all the really positive news related to the vaccines, right? And so there's just this feeling of I just, you just need to hold on.
Well, that's true. In the same token, it worries me because that might have the effect of making people think, well, the vaccine is going to be here right after Christmas, so I'll just go ahead and have Christmas.
Oh, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
I would, I would certainly, uh, you know, here in our borough, I hope that our residents would be, would be wise enough to recognize the risk factors and, and take the proper, proper steps to mitigate. Uh, you know, our borough is one of, that is particularly elderly, making it particularly vulnerable.
Yep.
We have a pretty high rate, forty five people.
Yeah, we, we, we've jumped up, you know, we're still, we're still well behind. But, you know, we went a long time in the beginning of this at three forever, five, then we went to ten, then like ten to twenty, you know? So, you know, um, and it's touched all of us, right? I mean, you know, uh, it's touched council, right? It, there's really nowhere that this isn't touching right now, so we all need to be, to be wise to it.
There's a, there's a beautiful scene in Virginia Woolf's novel, Mrs. Dalloway, where it's June, everybody's out celebrating, it's a beautiful sun, everybody's happy, pandemic is over and the war is over. So there's hope.
Get me to June, Norma, get me to June.
There'll be that June day.
So, uh, for everybody that's on, we're just gonna wait a couple more seconds here and, uh, we'll start moving our way forward. I think Alex has split me to the, uh, to the agenda, I believe. Um, and so I don't want to take more time and delay. Uh, we have eighty-three participants on today, and it's just kind of a side note, I'm sure that number will go up. Uh, and so at this time, I would, uh, call this meeting to order. If we can get a roll call, uh, for our council, that would be great, and then we'll do the pledge.
Councilmember Kevin Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Don DeFranco.
Here.
Councilmember Norma Greco.
Here.
Councilmember Adam McDowell.
Here.
Councilwoman Valerie Rethan, Rhett, Rhett Taylor, sorry about that, Valerie.
That's okay, thank you, I'm here.
And Vice President of Council Diane Long.
Here.
Mayor Paul Gamrat.
Here.
And Council President.
Uh, I am still here. Uh, having said that, uh, we'll begin, as we do our formal meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, where's, where's my, my mayor with the flag? This is the new Zoom reality, right? It's been for a while now, it's not even new in our reality. Um, but we do, uh, we do stand for the pledge and do our thing, so we can stand. You kind of lose me if I'm up my, up my way, there we go, a little better. Okay, I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberate.
We're getting, we're getting better on our timing of, uh, trying to say that in unison compared to the first couple of times we tried to do the pledge, I will, I will say that. Um, okay, so we'll call this, uh, a special meeting to order. Um, just for a little bit of, of overview and kind of purpose with regard, uh, regard to, to this meeting. Um, this meeting is really about considering ordinance number seven five, uh, which is about looking at the definition, uh, in terms of our use for, for distribution centers. Uh, as it, as it pertains to, uh, C two, uh, and what's allowable as conditional use. Um, just as kind of a side note, then I'll have our solicitor give the kind of formal kind of explanation of, of the ordinance itself. Uh, this is, this is, you know, part of a process. Uh, this is a step in a process, and so I think at this point, this is the only thing that we're actually talking about is this specific ordinance for this specific meeting, just to kind of put that out there. So we're, we're gonna go into a bit of detail after public comment, I think, as we kind of hit the, the, uh, the motion and allow everyone to kind of speak from, from council as well as from the public. Uh, right now, I'm gonna ask if the, uh, solicitor can give a, a, the kind of formal review of the ordinance that will be on the table for, for the public, that would be outstanding.
Sure, happy to do that, Mr. Dorn. Um, this is, as you pointed out, ordinance number seventy, seven, five, five, and, um, right now, just sort of by way of background, uh, the borough does define a similar use to distribution center. Um, it's a warehouse slash distribution center, and that use is permitted in the C two district only. What this ordinance would do would be to slightly revise the definition of warehouse distribution center to be called only distribution center. It would authorize that use in both the C one and the C two commercial districts as a conditional use. And I think it's important for the public, and I'm sure, I think council is aware, but important for the public to understand what, what that conditional use, uh, means. So, you know, what, what, uh, what's in front of council tonight is simply a change to the zoning ordinance. Um, and the change would again, uh, change the definition of distribution center and would allow for that use in the C one and the C two. And it also sets for certain criteria that an applicant, uh, who wishes to pursue this type of use uh, has to meet in order for, uh, in order to obtain approval from council. Uh, so, you know, the way the conditional use works is that, uh, a conditional use is essentially a use that is permitted under the zoning ordinance. But it's only permitted where the applicant can establish compliance with all the various criteria in the zoning ordinance as well as sort of the general criteria that such a use is not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, uh, just kind of getting into the, the meat of this, and I, I won't, I won't spend a ton of time on it, because I think it's fairly straightforward, but certainly if council has any questions as we go through, uh, don't hesitate to stop me a, and ask. So, if you're going through the, if you're looking at the ordinance, it's four pages, we have section one. Um, and as mentioned, uh, already, this is the change of the definition of the proposed use uh, to, from warehouse distribution center to distribution center. And there's not a whole lot of substantive change to that existing ordinance. Uh, section two of the ordinance um, is, is where we, uh, essentially add that use to be permitted both in the C one and the C two commercial districts. And I think for, I think most of the public's aware, but just to, to confirm, the, the primary C one parcel uh, that exists in the borough right now, the largest one is the former Westinghouse Research and Development Site, um, which, you know, as of right now, has several buildings kind of in various states of, of disrepair. And, uh, this, this, essentially, this ordinance would allow, um, an applicant who is able to meet the criteria to construct and use that property, any, any of the C one properties, uh, for this particular distribution center use. Uh, if you look to section three, this is where we added the specific criteria. And again, as I, as I mentioned, when an applicant comes in, they have to file an application that will include a site plan. And as well, in addition to the site plan, there's a number of, uh, items, um, and we'll kind of tick off the boxes here as we go through. Uh, but, um, in addition to the site plan, there are certain studies that would need to be required. So, if you're into the section three, which is really the meat of the ordinance, um, subsection A simply states that this is in fact a conditional use, uh, distribution center is a conditional use permitted in the C one and the C two districts where the applicant can establish compliance with not just the criteria here in A through I, but also the general criteria set forth in three oh four thirty-one of the zoning ordinance. And that again is sort of the, uh, general health, safety, and welfare type protections for these conditional uses. Uh, if you go to letter B, uh, you see that a traffic study is going to be required, and that's subject to the review of the borough's traffic engineer. Uh, in addition, uh, there are both PennDOT and county reviews of the proposed, uh, traffic mitigation, uh, plans and the studies that are going to be submitted. So, we've seen preliminary studies, uh, conceptual studies, but as part of an application, we, we, the borough would be receiving uh, more specific studies, uh, more specific proposals to mitigate traffic impact. Uh, if you go to C, um, this expands the height, uh, in the C one commercial district, uh, for this type of use. And again, this, this would allow the height to go up to one hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, in letter D, uh, this, the ordinance requires a parking study, uh, subject to the review and approval of the borough engineer. Uh, letter E requires a lighting study, uh, the borough zoning ordinance does have certain lighting criteria existing already in section three oh four seventeen. Uh, but we also have this sort of catch-all, uh, to ensure that there's gonna be no, uh, you know, material negative impact on surrounding residential properties in particular. Uh, so whether that's by screening, buffers, barriers, we want to mitigate the impact um, of a potential development of this site, especially to the surrounding residential properties. Uh, if you read the subcheck, subsection F, uh, similarly, this is a noise study requirement. And again, these are the types of studies that, you know, once the, once there is a firm site plan beyond the conceptual site plan, uh, the applicant would have their, uh, sort of expert, uh, or consultant provide a noise study that would then be reviewed, like all of these studies, by the borough's consultants to ensure, number one, that it's accurate, that it's verifiable, and two, what a reasonable, uh, plan to mitigate, uh, any potential noise impacts would be, uh, as part of subsection F there. Uh, subsection G is, is sort of a, a broad requirement, uh, to, that requires the applicant to submit a, an environmental impact study. Um, this would include impacts, potential impacts to air quality, water quality, and stormwater management uh, as a result of this proposed development. Now, the borough does have its own stormwater, uh, existing stormwater management ordinance, uh, that is in line with, uh, the county sort of model and, and the requirement essentially that, that most municipalities, if not all, in Allegheny County have adopted by this time. So, um, it's, it's fairly stringent, um, and, you know, questions could be directed to the borough engineer on that one. But in, in essence, as I understand it, uh, the, the new proposed development would not be able to, um, you know, result in any additional stormwater manage, uh, stormwater runoff than what is currently existing at the site. And we would expect, uh, uh, best management practice type improvements, uh, that would hopefully mitigate any existing problems that were out there, that, that are, that are out there right now. Um, letter H is, is a directive to make reasonable efforts to utilize environmentally positive design criteria. Um, you know, and whether that's i- in the form of, uh, you know, reusable resources, uh, that it, it's, it's written broadly in such a way that, you know, we, we would want to work with a, a potential applicant to develop this site uh, to ensure that that is, uh, that is, uh, top of mind, the environmental, uh, design criteria. And then finally, uh, letter I, uh, essentially just states that the, the studies that were just referenced, um, that we just went through are all going to be reviewed by experts that would be retained, uh, by the borough and would, and, and those experts would be paid by the applicant in accordance with the municipality's planning code. So, as these studies come in, uh, the way that this generally works is there's some back and forth, uh, between the applicant and the borough to ensure, you know, number one, that the studies are accurate, and two, that, you know, the, the proposed mitigation, uh, you know, plans are, are viable um, and they meet sort of the industry standards or the standards as applied, uh, by the borough engineers and other consultants. So, that's really, um, that's really the meat of the ordinance, uh, section four. Uh, if you, uh, you just note that this include, this covers a carve-out, um, as already mentioned, for that one hundred and twenty-five feet maximum height for this particular development, um, in the C one district. And so that, that's just, uh, sort of a clarification, because it's cross-referenced in this other section, this height requirement. Uh, so that is the, the ordinance itself, stepping back to the conditional use, uh, uh, sort of process, uh, what would happen if council, again, council is not, there, there's no application to develop this property currently in front of this council. Um, the potential developer of the C one, uh, site, the Westinghouse site, has provided some conceptual plans, some conceptual studies. Uh, none of those items are in front of council tonight. Uh, what is under, what is in front of council is simply this zoning amendment that is essentially the first step towards, um, a potential development of the site as has been proposed. So what would be required, assuming that Borough Council, uh, does enact this ordinance? And I'm not, you know, make, uh, the, the assumptions only being made in order to further explain the process. I'm not trying to make any predictions or try to, to sway any council members, uh, as, as to their vote this evening. But if, if council would in fact, uh, approve the zoning amendment, the next step would be that the applicant would have to file an application, but have to, that would include a, a formal site plan as well as these studies to establish that they do in fact, uh, meet these criteria. Council has sixty days within the date of the application to hold a public hearing, so there will be additional, uh, public input on the proposed, the proposed development, once there are specifics. Um, those plans are, uh, will be made available for, for public review as, so that they can provide meaningful in, input. Uh, you know, as this process continues, the borough can push that sixty-day, uh, hearing date out with the consent of the applicant. So if there are some items that are still unresolved, um, you know, in that time period, because this is a, I think we all acknowledge, this is a, this is a potentially, uh, i- if this, if this, uh, proposed application as the, as the concept has been provided, uh, moves forward, it obviously has a significant regional impact, you know, even well beyond Churchill Borough. So there will be, you know, kind of, there, there'll be a lot of, of work that goes into it, um, both by the applicant and by the borough, to make sure that, you know, whatever the, is ultimately approved. If it is, you know, again, it's up to the applicant to prove, comply, that they, that they meet these criteria in the ordinance, that, that these potential impacts are mitigated. In addition to requiring the applicant to satisfy the specific criteria, council also, um, under state law, does have the ability to place additional reasonable conditions upon the development. And, you know, these are not, they don't need to be included specifically in the ordinance, uh, and they are not. However, you know, as we go through, there may be certain items, uh, that are necessary, that council determines are necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents that would, could, that, that a conditional use approval, that could be added to a conditional use approval as conditions that the applicant would be required to meet in addition to those specific criteria that are contained in the ordinance. Uh, I think that's, that's kind of the, the gist of it. I don't know if Mr. Graziani or, uh, Mr. Dorn or any of council has any questions or wanted me to go, uh, into further detail on any particular item. Crickets.
No, no, I, I, it was a, a thorough explanation, I don't know if, uh, I think we've been through this uh, as council for, for months upon months, quite frankly. Um, I, you know, I'm not gonna speak until it's inside of a motion in terms of not dissuade debate. So unless there was a specific question for the solicitor, um, I'll move us kind of forward in, in the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate the, the kind of detailed explanation, um, for, particularly for the public to have kind of a clear understanding of, of what is being presented for today. Uh, that moves us, uh, on into the agenda, uh, into the space of, uh, public comment. And so, in the space of public comment, uh, if you are a resident or taxpayer here in the borough of Churchill, um, I would ask that if you kind of click on the participants at the, at the bottom there, it should give you the kind of option to raise your hand. Uh, and if you click on the raise your hand, then given that we have, uh, ninety-two participants, it will be much easier for me to see people and, and call them accordingly. Uh, once I call you, if you can state your name, uh, where you reside, and then you will have up to three minutes, uh, to speak. Uh, given the, the number of people that we have, I will be holding kind of stricter than normal to the three minutes. I generally kind of give a little bit of leeway, uh, but with ninety-two, uh, participants, which is wonderful, um, but it does make me have to, have to be a little bit more strict on time, be a good steward of, of everyone's time. Uh, that being the case, though, uh, at this point, if anyone is interested in speaking, as I said, if you, uh, want to kind of click into the participants and the raise your hand, uh, I will call on you, and then after what I've seen, gone through all the hands, if I don't see, uh, and I've clicked through all the hands, I will check to see if anyone didn't understand it, and they're waving their hand or whatnot. But I would prefer, uh, for this purpose that we're able to do that. I do see some hands going up, so I will begin, and also, I'll just have everyone forgive me if I butcher anybody's name. I, I really apologize kind of upfront if that happens. Uh, that being said, uh, Gene Pasternak, you, you are up first. And I believe you may be.
Hi there. Yes, um, I'm actually here with Jane Pellegrini, four, six, one, Woodland Hills Drive, she's my mom. Uh, she's, um, you know, an elderly citizen, has lived in this, uh, borough for over fifty years. Um, I have one comment first. I think it's really difficult during this COVID time and using Zoom for people like her to participate and voice their opinions, because they don't know the technology, they're not familiar with it. They don't even know that this, uh, meeting is taking place. So I have real concerns that this major thing is happening, as my mom would like to express, without people of her age group, uh, that don't have the technology and can't participate as they would like to. That's, that's one, one comment, but also you have a question, right, Mom? Because you said, what about my other friends in this area that can't even, don't even know about this, can't zoom in? They don't have the tech, they don't have the software. So I hope somebody can address that. The second thing is, um, the, uh, concerns that my mom would like to express are, um, firstly, what, what impact will this have on, uh, the taxation on all the citizens here in Churchill Borough? Uh, what impact will that have as far as a distribution center or whoever that owner is? How, what taxes will they pay to help mitigate all the expenses that they will bring onto this, uh, borough? Secondly, um, what impact will, and I see that the ordinance addresses this to some degree, but the pollution, the noise, and so forth. Um, how's that going to be measured? Who sets the criteria and will the citizens have a voice in terms of determining exactly what, what, um, what measurement will be used to determine whether they're acceptable or not in their application? Um, the third thing is, what impact on all the, uh, amenities and, and functions in this borough, such as the school system? How will that be impacted by having something on such a huge scale of this? Um, is there anything else?
No, that's good, that's good, when we talked about.
Okay.
Right, thank you very much for, for your comment. Uh, unfortunately, we don't, we're not doing kind of a back and forth in this, so it's not really much of a, in, in terms of the question and answer as much as it is to hear the comments. Um, I will note that there has been multiple meetings, um, and so we certainly are, are listening to your comments, though. Uh, moving on next, uh, I'm gonna go to Susan O'Keefe.
Hello, um, I'm Suzanne O'Keefe, I grew up in Churchill, I, uh, lived most of my life um, away from Churchill, I've lived in Chicago and Vancouver and, uh, Los Angeles, and now I'm back living here the past three years, Churchill is a.
Sorry to interrupt, you can just state your address, please?
Twenty forty Hempstead Drive.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and, um, I think Churchill is a special community, and you probably, lots, lots of longtime residents don't realize how special it is. But it is, uh, protected in some ways from a lot of the, the difficulties that many places around the country have, uh, experienced. And I, uh, strongly object to this onslaught, onslaught of basically the, the forces that have created such destruction in other parts of the country. Uh, I think because we've been sheltered here, you may not understand, these are monopoly capitalists, they lie, they cheat, they don't tell you the truth of what's going to happen. The, the actual destruction that I saw in my communities in Los Angeles were, uh, happened just because of people like this. They would go in and basically persuade everybody in small boroughs to agree to some onerous, uh, company, and there's no looking back. They just, once they get their hands on something, they just roll over everything. I think their environmental impacts are gonna be horrible. Um, I think that the light pollution and the noise pollution, as well as the air pollution, are just gonna be off the charts. My, um, ex-boyfriend in LA was a truck driver, I was around it for a long time, it gets in your lungs, the diesel fuel, the noise, the pollution, it's just off the charts. I think it's gonna do real damage to the roads. Uh, that kind of traffic that I've been told has happened, is happening, would be expected. And I think that they're, um, trying to get us to quietly open the, the latches to the door so that they can, uh, make their way through here. And this is one of those latches that they're trying to get us to undo. Um, they, like, Amazon, um, is notorious for mistreating its workers. And I sent over, um, example of what, you know, some of the allegations that have happened in other countries through to Alex. So please consider these things, and I strongly, uh, recommend that we do not open the latches to let them in.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, moving on to, uh, Matthew Castiglione.
Hi, good evening, uh, Matt Castilla here, thirty-eight, ten Bernaby Drive. Uh, just wanted to take a moment, you know, and, um, talk, you know, a little bit more about the Westinghouse development and say that, you know, up here, we support it. Um, yeah, I think it would be a huge missed opportunity for the borough if we didn't move forward with this. Uh, the site has been sitting empty and rotting away since two thousand and twelve with a, a few failed redevelopment tries. You know, I, I hear a lot of, um, other residents talking about kind of what it's gonna do or how it's gonna disturb. But, but the truth is, you know, the, the kind of heyday of Churchill was back when Westinghouse was booming, and then there was a lot of people with jobs close, and, and there was, uh, money coming into the community. And, you know, since they've left, we've seen a lot of things kind of go downhill, the, the country club closed. Um, you know, the site's sitting there, it's an environmental hazard, and, and no one's really interested in, um, doing anything with it. You know, it's, it's, it's not like there's a lot of people and we're going, hey, let's pick one of the best ten projects. Um, it's been sitting empty and it's rotting away. Um, you know, I think it's a drain on the community. Um, additionally, I'll say that typically development projects like this, you know, they come in and they ask for tax breaks, they ask for all this other help. You know, they want the, the township and the borough to do all this, you know, the money and, and residents put up money to try to attract these places. That's not being asked for here. Um, great examples down in McKeesport, R I D C Park, they poured all that type of money in there, tax breaks, Dish Network went in, had, you know, almost a thousand jobs, soon as the tax breaks were up, ten years later, gone. Um, you know, fortunately for us, Amazon's not asking for that, they want to be here. Um, so, you know, overall, we're just throwing our support behind it. We think that, yeah, there's certainly the, uh, um, could be some problems, but which, you know, we trust that the, the Borough Council's gonna work through those things. Um, you know, it's, and kind of based on the list that the solicitor, solicitor talked about, those issues will be addressed, the state, you know, Department of Environmental Protection, Transportation, et cetera. They're gonna do their job, they're gonna protect our community. Certainly, you know, is there gonna be small issues, i- it's gonna happen. There's also gonna be issues if the site just sits there and rots away, and twenty years from now, we're stuck footing the bill to clean up a bunch of, uh, Westinghouse garbage. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, moving on to, uh, Tom Burrows. I know you're with me, Tom. It's the, it's the magic of the mute button. See if I can ask you to unmute, Tom. There you go. You're with us, Tom, give me a shot here. And if not, I will come back to you. All right, Tom, I see you, but, uh, I don't see you unmuted, so if you wanna speak, you can unmute yourself. If not, I'm going to move forward and I'll come back to you, I promise.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, good, Tom Burrows, sixteen thirty-four, James Tom Place. Um, and just a reminder, uh, Mr. Robb is, is telling us that all you're acting on is to add the distribution center, uh, to the present ordinance. Uh, I have no problem with that. However, I think that as we move forward on the other items, specifically the traffic plan, there needs to be given more thought to that, and indeed, it ought to be, be solved before you move further on anything else. So I think that the traffic plan needs to include the Bueller Church, the borough, and residents that would impact in particularly across from Old Gate. Uh, I think this is a good priority as you move forward. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, Tom. I'm going to be moving forward to Eric Groziger.
Thank you. Eric Groziger, 2373 Hollywood Drive. I've lived at this address for thirty-two years. I want to express my support for council to enact ordinance 755, so that Hillwood can refine their proposal for the development of an Amazon distribution center. My points in favor of this ordinance are, one, Hillwood has been working with council for 1.5 years and has the support of Jay Costa, Senator Casey, Summer Lee, Senator Toomey, Governor Wolf, the Woodland Hills School District, the Port Authority, the Blackridge Civic Association, and others. Two, the Churchill Planning Commission, which has studied this site and what options we have there, voted in favor of this proposed amendment that will allow Hillwood to address our concerns and build a facility that will meet or exceed environmental, traffic, sound, and photometric standards. Three, this site will be for small packages, that is, things that are contained in an envelope or small box. This will reduce the truck traffic, since these trucks can carry large amounts of these packages. The site, however, will be employee-intensive, fourteen hundred employees versus nineteen hundred that were working at Westinghouse in its heyday. The shifts for these workers are proposed to be staggered before and after our normal rush hour. Four, this is a blighted site and needs to be remediated. This is a large issue that we all face and have faced for many years. If we do not remediate this site, the problems will increase. Not only are these buildings loaded with asbestos, but also there are chemicals in the soil and leaching into the soil. The cost to remediate this site is massive. This is our opportunity to fix these serious problems and bring an economic engine to our community. Five, Hillwood's proposal comes with a full landscape package that will keep or improve our tree population. Six, this is a $300 million project that will increase our school and local tax revenue by $11.7 million. This will benefit our school district and allow our borough to address infrastructure problems such as stormwater flooding. Also, building this facility will not make the current stormwater problem worse, and in fact, might mitigate it.
Eric, I appreciate your comment. Unfortunately, the time is up and I am holding the three minutes. So thank you very much for, for your comment. I do appreciate it. Moving on to Ken Balki.
Thank you. This is Ken Balki. I reside with my wife Ruth Ann at 2007 Hampstead Drive. Been a resident for forty-three years and worked at Westinghouse for forty-two years, including two tours at the Westinghouse Research Center. These are comments I have or beyond those I provided before. There is a concern, it came to me over the weekend, and it echoes one voiced earlier, and that over the weekend, I ran into a resident on Lewin Lane, whose home is right up against it. When I asked them, just in small talk, saying, hey, what about the redevelopment? They had no idea of anything going on. They said they don't get the Swift Reach outreach, they also, they don't visit our website, the Churchill Borough website, on a regular basis. And I also, last week, I had emailed fifty residents here in the Royal Oak Plan, who we have a little, we have get-togethers here of activities we do, and some of them, some of them are on the, the session here tonight, but others that I ran into, even with me emailing them, they said, hey, what's going on here? And they have a perception that the Hillwood's, all they're going to do is rejuvenate those Westinghouse buildings. They have no idea of the size of building that Hillwood was planning to put in, remove the buildings that exist, and then dig deeply to put this hundred and twenty-foot, eight hundred thousand square feet with four levels, bringing it to three and a half million square feet. They're clearly unaware of that. Now, the solicitor this evening may have learned my concerns in that the vote tonight's on the amendment, but if the vote is yes, and then Hillwood brings proposals forward, the one they have or one refined, I really implore council and the borough managers, you're going to have to do extra efforts to inform all the people about what's going on. Otherwise, people are going to feel very caught off guard. Particularly, what I'm concerned is that a lot of folks in support of the project do not live on the streets where they're going to have the light visibility, the traffic, and all the noise. We have yet to hear anybody from Buell Road, Lewin Lane, Upper Greensburg Pike, get on this call and say, oh, I'm all for this. They're the people who truly have skin in the game. You can name all the politicians you want, they don't live here. They are not going to be the ones dealing on a day-to-day basis. So it's really critical for council and the borough manager to really get to the residents, all residents, but particularly those who are right against the site. My final comment is, I, I don't envy the council members doing their vote tonight. I think you have a very, most difficult vote I've seen in all the years I've lived here. If you vote not to go forward and not change the amendment, I'll volunteer to help find other things, other things it could do, other possible businesses you could do.
I appreciate your comment. Unfortunately, that, that's the three minutes I am holding. So thank you for your comment, Ken. Moving forward to Kathy Bortner.
Kathy? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, my name is Kathy Bortner. I live at 1926 Hampstead Drive with my husband David. I have, I oppose this proposal for the following reasons. Traffic will be more congested, this will directly impact our neighborhood, Royal Oak Avenue, Hampstead Drive, and Holland Road. The traffic on Buell Road will increase, which will make it more difficult to turn right or left from Royal Oak to Buell Road. The intersection of Buell Road and Lewin Lane is already hazardous, it will have to have significant improvements. There are also going to be more traffic in our neighborhood as employees coming from Monroeville will take a shortcut through this neighborhood to get to the site, and we will not be able to walk in our neighborhood because of this, which we can now do. In addition to the traffic problems this is going to create in our neighborhood, the traffic at Buell Road and Penn Highway will likely go from bad to horrible, even with the installation of a traffic circle. I know that engineers are trained to solve problems like this, but I've seen many highway improvements like the proposed traffic circle that only made things worse and caused me and others to wonder, what were they thinking? Allowing a development like a distribution center that overburdens the area with employee vehicles and delivery trucks, trucks is not the right choice. Stormwater runoff will probably be impacted. The Bureau will not know the real impact on stormwater until after the construction, and we have large rains. That's when it's going to be apparent regardless of how many studies you do. Noise pollution from the site and from the increased traffic is going to impact us, and especially the homes in the area directly around the site. Air pollution caused by the trucks coming and going to the site, as well as employees' vehicles, will severely impact air quality in Churchill. This will be made worse by the removal of mature trees. Light on the site is going to severely impact homes in the area of the border of the site, it's going to impact our homes, as well as homes much nicer than mine on Holland Road that will have lights shining into the back of their houses. I believe that this distribution center is not in appropriate use for this site. This is a residential community surrounded by homes. Amazon can build on other sites, but Churchill cannot recover what we're going to lose. The one undeniable benefit is the tax income. All of the borough will benefit from more taxes paid by Amazon, but those of us who live in the vicinity will pay the price for those benefits, and we're going to lose property value of our property. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time and your comment. Moving on to Alon Hutton.
Hello. Hi, Jerry Hutton, my wife Lon. We live at 3224 Nottingham Drive. We've been here since ninety-one. We, we live in Churchill because it's a residential community. We were relying on the ordinance code because it's for people who live, not for businesses. There's plenty of places in Allegheny County for people to put up and erect businesses, and it's suitable for those, but it's not here in Churchill. It's, it's a community of homes and families. I joined in Ken Balki's remark is that this sort of caught me off guard, that I hadn't heard any of these proposals until recently, and I just stumbled upon it. And it's not a minor change. It was suggested in the introduction by council attorney that this is only a small change in the ordinance. Well, it's maybe a few lines or a few words, but it's going to be a major impact on the community as a whole. This changes the community from a residential community to an industrial site, and they're talking about traffic. What we're saying, traffic is not just a few cars, it's trucks. And if you've done anything with the shale industry, it left the roads. These trucks leave the roads in the shambles, and the companies that do that don't go and volunteer and pay for the damage they do behind. I was concerned by one remark, and it indicates that we're going to have expert engineers look at everything and determine whether it's proper or not. But the remark that concerned me was that those experts, they're going to be paid from the applicant's funds. So if, if the experts, and they, they're, they're smart people, they know that who's paying them is the applicant, how can I rely on their decision that it's actually going to be a proper decision? People like experts can be bought there, like broccoli, you buy them by the bunch, and now you're going to have Amazon paying people to come in and say, the noise is good, the traffic's good, the roads are going to be fine. I just don't trust the process. It's going to have a major impact. I live on Nottingham, that's going to be a lot of traffic on Nottingham. And I'm, I'm concerned that the people who live on Nottingham and who live on Churchill Road, they haven't been informed of this. And this process that we're using right now, the process of notification is that it's hard defective. People should be getting written notification of this change, because you're talking about Churchill changing from a residential area into a major industrial site with heavy traffic, changing the community in full. And I think everyone should be properly informed of that, and everybody have the opportunity to come in and make a change, and not simply a Zoom call with ninety people on it. It affects the community as a whole. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Duly noted. Appreciate your comment. Moving on to Kevin McGuire.
Hello, Kevin McGuire, 44 Garden Terrace. I am very enthusiastic about the proposed amendment. I am a employee of Woodland Hills School District, and I understand Woodland Hills would benefit greatly from the proposed change. But beyond that, as a young family living in Churchill and other young families I've talked to, we need more tax base, we need more people to, to look at Churchill as a, as a place that I love, living here, and, you know, having young families move in and want to stay. And I think that Churchill's in a very unique position to do that with this development, with the, in terms of, of employment. And it was mentioned earlier by somebody that the site is blighted, you know, that's a word that's, that's used a lot. And, and that is, that, that is true. There's not much else that could go there. There's not another company that could come in and do all the things that are necessary to be done to make that something that could generate revenue. So I'm very supportive of, of, of this amendment, and thank you.
Thank you again for, for your comment. Moving forward to Mark Miller.
Hello. Yes, my name is Mark Miller. I live at 16 Lewin Lane. I'm the, the resident that Ken Balki ran into, and that's prompting the first of my comments, which is, I didn't really know anything about this. I've even spoken probably in July with Alex Graziani, which was very nice and somewhat informative. I would note that there wasn't a printed newsletter delivered by the borough, at least I did not get one for the, the third quarter, I guess, yeah, the fall quarter of two thousand, of 2020. So to be honest with you, the lack of communication, there's a million other things that one could do, too. I'm sure you guys have email addresses, and there's, there's just ways to do this. I've worked in communications, and if you want to reach out, you can do it. My sense is that people involved in making some of these decisions or moving them backward or forward are not reaching out, and that is my chief concern. With regard to what I've heard about, basically, what I would just characterize as pro or con Amazon, because that's really what we're talking about here, is I would have to, I'd say, most strongly agree with Lon and the comment that Churchill is a residential area, and by bringing in a facility such as an Amazon fulfillment center, it becomes an industrial area, and that's not appropriate. And while I understand why some of the people who were for the distribution center see monetary or tax-based incentives, I agree with those as well. However, there are other ways to do that, an office park, a place without 10,000 trucks coming in day and night. And if we can't attract that, you know, then I guess we have to become more creative. But I don't think that Amazon is the answer, and I don't think that Churchill is an industrial neighborhood. That's it. Thank you for allowing me to, to comment.
Of course. Thank you for your comment. I do appreciate it. Moving on to, yeah, Bill.
Yes, thank you. I realize I'm getting ahead of the purpose of tonight's meeting, but I wanted to express a couple of concerns. The first one was that at the last presentation, they proposed that the noise of the trucks would be 55 decibels at the property, property line. Looking at the diagram of the property, they're proposing to install ten-foot-high sound walls at all of the entrances. So 55 decibels at the property line means right behind those sound walls. As soon as those trucks pass through the sound walls, and for instance, onto the Greensburg Pike, the sound will go up. I did some looking online, and the sound of a tractor trailer is about 85 decibels, all right? And truck designers talk about something called the street canyon amplification, meaning a truck going down the Greensburg Pike, the sound will reflect off both sides of the street, off of the houses, and somewhat be amplified. And I realize I'm being self-centered, but for those who live on Werber Road, I think that constitutes an unnecessary annoyance. I'd like to see that at least addressed in the future evaluation of the proposals. The other thing that I'm concerned about are the home prices. Given that Amazon is notorious for not paying really good salaries, I wonder what proportion of the Amazon employees can actually afford to buy a home in Churchill Borough. I'd like to see that evaluated as we look at the future proposals. And, oh, lastly, I've seen no proposal that a group from council or a group from council and citizens might travel to one of these other sites in person and talk to the people in the neighborhood and see what their impression of the installation has been. Thanks for letting me speak.
Of course. Thank you for your comment. I greatly appreciate it. Moving on to Carl Rothenberger. So Carl, are you there, Carl? Hand went up?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. Hello, Carl Rothenberger, 1720 Williamsburg Place.
Hello, Carl Rothenberger, seventeen twenty Williamsburg Place for about thirty five years. I'm in support of the vote in favor of the amendment to the zoning ordinance in ordinance seven fifty five. Frankly, I think I would, I could take some time and disagree with a lot of the facts being stated tonight as not being well founded or well researched or well based. That's not the purpose of this meeting. I think that's the job of council. If the the amendment is passed and and a an application is proposed to try to meet the criteria which address sound, lighting, noise, environmental runoff, et cetera, that's the job of the process after the ordinance permits the application to commit. So I'm in favor of the application. I'm in favor of the ordinance being amended, and I'm not going to take issue with the factual misstatements that I've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I don't see any other hands up. I'm going to give a minute to see if there's any other hands up. And then I'm also going to kind of peruse the the video. And if you are calling in, because I do see some call in folks, I will, I will certainly allow for for you to speak. I know you're not going to have your hand up, so I'll need you to to unmute. Right now, I do see a few more hands that come up. I'm going to do those. And then after I get to the hands, I'll ask people who are a call in, and then I'll look and see if there's anybody else on video. So next up, I have Leif Metz, who is, I think, representing the the potential applicants at the at the site now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. So as as President Warren said, my name is Leif Metz, and I represent Hillwood, which is the applicant for this zoning amendment. And I wanted to thank council and Mr. Graziani, Mr. Mayor, and the solicitor for their hard work with us over the past year and a half. And I I grew up in Churchill. I lived there until nineteen eighty seven, so that it's a community that's important to me and and that I spent a big chunk of my life there. So we hear the concerns that the community is raising. And as the solicitor was explaining in his opening remarks, what's being voted on by council tonight is simply whether to amend the text amendment to permit a distribution center use as a conditional use. So this is just the very first step. There will be a second and very rigorous part of the process, which is the conditional use approval. And that's the main place where Hillwood will be required to demonstrate to council satisfaction that it has addressed the quality of life issues that that many of the residents are understandably are raising. So, for example, the level of sound and the lighting and the stormwater runoff and traffic. So we know that all of those things are important. Already submitted studies addressing each one of those items, and the borough's engineers have provided feedback. And so we'll be submitting further studies to respond to the feedback from the borough's engineers. So we deeply understand those concerns and are going to continue to work hard side by side with Borough Council to address those. Couple of quick things that I wanted to mention. There was a question that was raised earlier about who is paying for the consultants. And I think that what the solicitor was trying to communicate is that the cost of the review of the studies isn't being paid out of the borough's coffers. So the way that it works is we is that the applicant has its own consultant, which is Lang and Engineering. So there are guys, we pay them. So they, of course, they they have their own professional ethics, but they but they're helping us try to move the project forward. The borough has its own engineers at Gateway who handle all manner of matters for the borough. So they're engaged by the borough, and and they do what the borough asks. So they're there to make sure that we've done it right. So the the solicitor was just pointing out that the fees that end up getting billed by Gateway, the borough doesn't have to absorb those. Those are being passed through to the developer, but we don't engage Gateway. They're not doing our bidding. I also thought it would be helpful as when I was growing up, Westinghouse was still there and still thriving, and there were about nineteen hundred employees at Westinghouse at the time that it flowed.
Mr. Metz, well, I appreciate your comment. I am holding people to three minutes. You are no exception in this, and so I'm going to be moving on, but I appreciate your comment.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to to Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. President. My wife Eileen and I live at one zero four three Black Forest Road. We've been Churchill residents for about twenty five years or so now. My comments will be relatively brief. First of all, we are in complete support of changing this ordinance. We believe that Borough Council has started down a long time ago, the road of doing their due diligence and are doing a good job with it. And I would also ask everyone to remember that there are still many, many approvals and oversight to come once a an actual bona fide proposal, the use of the site in front of Borough Council, and there will be plenty of opportunity to deal with some of the concerns. That said, I'm going to ask all residents to, let's avoid reinventing the wheel here. There are, this is essentially new construction. There are so many state and federal and local regulations already on the books having to do with all of the subjects that have been where where concerns have been expressed, and many, many more, that if you're not satisfied with the level of air quality compliance or noise compliance or traffic compliance, then your argument is not so much with the Borough Council, but it's with whoever is responsible for having made the state laws and federal laws that will come into play here once this project, whatever the project will be, moves forward. To those residents who are concerned about not knowing about this, I'm saying this, I I don't mean this to sound trite, and and I'm saying this with all due respect, but just as ignorance of the law is not a defense, neither is a a residence not knowing about something, any sort of a defense. The borough has done an excellent job of keeping this information on the website. If you want to receive timely texts as to all the meetings and emails, timely texts and emails as to all the meetings and everything else, just ask the borough. Get on their list. Your phone will ping every time one of these things goes off. It is your responsibility as a resident to stay abreast. It's not the borough's responsibility to reach out to you. Lastly, I would argue, I would offer this. And again, it is with respect. I don't live on one of the major roads, but to some of the residents, especially those who live on the expressway on ramp to westbound.
James, I I am, I am cutting people off at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the. But I appreciate your comment very much. I am now going to give a moment. If there's anybody on the phone who needed to speak, if you can say your name, your address, and I will, I will cede time for you as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
This is Susan Sterrett and Peter Spurdees. We're at one nine zero three Hampstead Drive. And I'm going to focus on what you're voting on, which is the the zoning amendment. The zoning amendment, I know in Pennsylvania, it's special. I actually did over fifty years ago, I did my civics project in high school on zoning in Pennsylvania. So I'm aware of a lot of the complexities. But what I want to say is, when I look at this amendment, what I see as the weak point is the fact that all the power is invested in the borough engineer. Now, I know that the intent of the amendment is that council is directing the engineer, that there's a lot of input from all the residents, but then the amendment should say that, and it does not say that. And once it's passed, it's passed. And I would encourage council to think very deeply and very hard about that weak point, which everything else depends on, that it's all, it's written as though it's one, one holder of one office, all these huge decisions. Judgment is involved. You look at these reports, and judgment is involved in deciding whether the reports are thorough and accurate, whether they included, you know, everything they're supposed to include. The other thing I would say is that I, the traffic, the only thing that's been mentioned is cars and and tractor trailers. But something I brought up last time when Hillwood was there, and they didn't say anything about. And I sent Alex an article on this. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, I would ask to make sure other people are muting themselves. I'm just going to give you the. So you can continue.
Okay. So the other thing, and I've sent Alex the article on this, I can send it to anybody else, is that by twenty thirty, Amazon has a commitment to be low energy or something. It sounds good. But the point is that what they what their their commitment entails is using a new kind of drone called a cargo drone that actually has jet fuel and is much bigger than the little tiny drones that you that deliver to houses. And what I'm wondering is whether, when people talk about traffic, drones are something new, are they going to slip in through it? And if we have some, you know, we have this amendment that's allowing distribution centers, often what happens with new kinds of technologies, nobody's foreseeing a certain, you know, a certain problem or a certain item, and it isn't addressed by any current standards. And I would ask the the council to think about that, too. Alex has the article. He can show you. It explains everything, and I'd like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate that. Was there anybody else on the on the phone who wanted to speak? All right. I'm also going to ask if there's anyone who was unable to find the the kind of raised hand button. If you want to physically raise your hand right now, I will take a look through and see if I'm missing anyone before we proceed forward.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Alex, I spoke to you earlier in the week. My name is.
I'm sorry.
Sure, I will. My name is Michael Schlossberg. I live at three two one six Nottingham Drive. I moved into Churchill in nineteen seventy eight. I'm absolutely against this project, although I do live on Nottingham, and it won't, hopefully would not affect me as much. I actually worked in a fulfillment center when they were first started in New York City by United Parcel Service, loading, unloading trucks, small packages. The facilities were dirty, smelly, not in very good shape. I understand there's new technology. I'm a little offended by the use of a fulfillment center. This is a, this is basically a warehouse, and we need to understand that. And it has all the downsides of a warehouse, except it's maybe a little bit cleaner. There are issue, the traffic issue is a major issue. The site may be bad. One thing I would like to bring up that was brought up to me by somebody who we who used to work in a nuclear site, there may be radioactive waste in there, and that's something that NRC, National Nuclear Regulatory Commission, probably has rules, and that's something I have not have not heard anybody mentioned. I'm not sure that the the other, some of the other issues are the police, fifteen hundred people coming there. There's definitely going to be some issue and cars, issues with crime. Who's going to pay for the increased police force with Churchill? Fire, we have a volunteer fire department. My father was a fireman in New York City, and I can tell you, if there's ever a serious fire there, I hope none of our volunteer fire people have to have to go in. And then there's other issues with people getting injured there and our ambulance service. We have a one, I've, as I said, I've lived here for forty some years. The community over the last five or ten years has just boomed, new young people coming in. We have a very diversified community now. I think our community is, prices of homes are going up for an obvious reason. They like the way things are. For tho- those and many other reasons, I am totally opposed to this plan. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your time as well and your comment. Was there anyone else who wanted to comment? I see Esther's iPhone, so you've raised the hand. Please feel free to state your name, address, and your comment, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Esther. I'm speaking on behalf of my father, Casimir Pellegrini, who is incapacitated and unable to speak. I'm his power of attorney, so I thought that would give me some.
Address, please.
The address is four six one Woodland Hills Drive. And I'd like to echo what that I am opposed to this, strongly opposed to this. My parents, I grew up in the Churchill area and lived there all of my young adult life. And it is a residential area where people come and go as residents. And I think, and I know from experience, I live in the North Hills community near another Amazon distribution center. And people are unable to walk their children in strollers because the Amazon employees are treated so poorly that they are required to do so many deliveries per hour that they are unable to use a restroom. So they are urinating in water bottles and throwing them out the windows, onto the sidewalks, into the bushes. So my friends with young children are unable to walk their children on the sidewalks because they smell urine, and it's a, it's a complete hazard to the community. I'm very opposed to it, as I said, speaking on behalf of my my parents. And I think it's a bad, for all of the reasons that others have mentioned, there's no need to reiterate all of those. But I wanted to add that there are friends of mine in my community that have experienced this, and it's not meant for Churchill Borough. There have to be other options at another time. This is just not the right time for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment as well. Was there anyone else who was on a phone who wanted to make comments? All right, I'm going to go to William Nelson.
Hi, my name is Elena Nelson. I live with my husband, Michael, at thirty eight fifteen Henley Drive. I've lived here for over twenty years. Without restating everything that everyone has said, I do not envy council for this decision. I thank everyone for their hard work. I am not in favor of the ordinance, or if the ordinance is to be passed, is it possible to note the opposition to making Churchill an industrial as opposed to residential neighborhood for all the objections stated prior? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Moving to Phil O'Keefe. Phil O'Keefe. There you go.
Yeah, it's Phil O'Keefe with Tracy here, twenty forty Hampstead Drive. You guys got a difficult decision to make because I I am pretty much eighty percent against it and twenty percent for, and I can see the reasons for both. I've been here, I was born here in nineteen sixty six. My dad used to work at the research labs. And just on a side note, I think the actual number was twenty two hundred people. And it, you know, I love it being a residential community, and the only way we're actually going to know if this is beneficial to Churchill is to put it in place, wait ten years, revote, and if they've done it correctly, leave it. And if they don't like it, go back ten years, take it away, and continue on as if we said no here. So proof's in the pudding, if they do it correctly, which I'm skeptical of, it'll be awesome, especially for Woodland Hills School District and all the tax revenues they're going to get. They could pump money into the school, make make Woodland Hills. I know they do some great things in there, and I think it needs a little bit of a PR campaign, but that could be huge for Woodland Hills, right? And the tax revenue, all, maybe we can get our leaves picked up over here in Royal Oak. I mean, I can see all the benefits there, but it's going to be tough to know what it's going to be unless it's actually in place for ten years. So I don't envy the vote here. I can, like I say, I'm leaning against it, eighty twenty, but. So I don't envy the vote here. I can, like I say, I'm, I'm leaning against it, eighty, twenty, but, um, and also just, I know the concerns of the traffic is not just gonna be around that surrounding area. Back when the research labs was in place, there is a restriction on left-hand turns on a Nottingham drive because all the employees would go straight on Churchill Road, would not go onto the parkway, would go all the way down Churchill Road and make the left-hand turn, and it was a nightmare for Churchill, I mean, for Nottingham residents and Churchill Road residents, so. If it, if it's done correctly, which that has to be a very high standard, I can see how it's beneficial. If not, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, is there any other comments that I'm looking at here? Again, I'm trying to make sure everybody has ample opportunity, um, to speak. I'm kinda rolling through. I don't see anybody on video who's raising their hand. I've got one more, Steve. Uh, if you wanna state your name and address, Steve, uh, you can feel free to speak.
Hey, thank you. Steve Landay, thirty-seven eighty-sixth Rural Court for about the last five years, and before that, Bueller Road for about forty-five. Um, so I'm late to this meeting, so if this was covered already, um, forgive me. So, a couple weeks ago, I said, uh, they should release the traffic reports, the studies that they did. And they should be able to give us an example of an intersection of a similar facility where they've had an intersection as difficult as this, where, where that type of civil engineering change actually worked. That's one. Um, I, I'm, I'm skeptical that just two changes is, 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 is adequate. That changed, they adding the, the off-ramp off of Greensburg and then the roundabout. What are they gonna do with the, with the traffic light in front of the actual entrance? And, um, fifteen hundred employees. Uh, I asked also, I brought up a couple weeks ago, yeah, so is there, are there going, are there going to be peak and off-peak times that we can predict? Like when it was Westinghouse and Research Development Center. That was predictable. It was Monday through Friday, eight to four, whatever. So we, as neighbors, worked around that. Um, and it was, it was fine. So, um, I caution the council on, on, on accepting just the, oh, it'll be fine, it'll be fine, it'll be fine. I think we need to ask way more critical questions and be shown examples in other areas. Um, I believe they have a facility like this out near our airport. However, it's, it's, it's very, it's, it's very rural. It's not nearly as residential as the one they're proposing to do here in Churchill. So, um, that's my comment, and, uh, please think it over. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Um, there was another hand raised that went down, I believe, uh, it was, Yvonne, you're back up again. Outstanding. Uh, Yvonne, the floor is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't wanna reiterate everything that has.
For the record, I'm sorry to interrupt. State your name and, and address, then kind of move on.
My name is Yvonne Plowey. My husband and I, Bob, have been in this neighborhood for at least forty-four years. We live at thirty-two twenty Nottingham Drive. We love our community. We love being here. Uh, the fact that we only have three thousand residents approximately in this borough, um, we're only three point five square miles, to have an industrial, uh, organization move in, I think would change the entire dynamic of the neighborhood. I think, um, in recent years, we have developed a very diverse community. Everyone, at least on Nottingham Drive, loves one another. We all get along. But the issue for me is traffic. I live sometimes, uh, in an area where I can't even get out of my driveway, depending on the time of day. I have, as I said, been here forty-some years. I've had a car slam into the front of my house, tear down my front porch, and come through the front doors. And this is a residential area. Now, true, it was an outstanding, you know, unique situation. I can't imagine having trucks come up and down the street and turn this place into a neighborhood that isn't what it was intended to be. But I do believe that that area does need to have some kind of change. It needs to have some kind of, um, plan designated, but I would prefer to see a green area, something with residential, um, aspirations. And, um, I think that with all the people who live here, there must be another plan other than an industrial area. Thank you, and I appreciate all the time and effort that you've put into this, and I hope that Churchill remains a residential community. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate, uh, your comment. Uh, I will look again and see if there's anybody else. Again, I try to afford everyone the opportunity to speak, uh, and so let me just take a little bit further look to make sure. Okay, uh, I'm gonna close public comment then, uh, and we'll move forward on the agenda. I like to put the agenda back up. We're right at the, uh, simple moment. Um, so at this point, um, I think we are awaiting a motion for the floor.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance seven fifty-five in ordinance for the borough of Churchill to define distribution center into a man sections governing commercial district C two and C two to allow distribution centers as a conditional use in the C one and C two district and adding conditional use criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Is there a second? I will ask again if there is a second on the floor.
A second.
Okay, hearing a second, uh, we'll move into discussion. For the purposes of discussion, given the weight and gravity of, of this particular motion, I am going to ask that council members allow each council member to make their own individual statement, and then if we want to go into further discussion, uh, we can at such time. That being the case, I will do this Hollywood Square style, uh, and just move across my screen if it's okay with everyone. Beginning, uh, with Adam, if, if you don't mind, if you have any comment that you would like regarding this.
Sure. Um, first, I just wanna thank everyone. Um, over the course of the last few weeks, we have seen a huge participation in these meetings. We've heard comments on both sides. We've had a lot of people come out and express concerns. This is something that I think we have, as a council, taken a lot of time. We've looked into a lot of aspects of this. We have, uh, really, um, you know, everything that's been expressed here, we really take that to heart. We, we understand the concerns. Um, I was skeptical about this at the beginning. I didn't think this was a good idea. Um, over the course of a lot of research, a lot of hours spent on this, um, I think that, you know, it's, you know, i- is it a perfect fit for us? I don't know. Um, but is it the right thing to do right now? That site sat there for years, unoccupied. And I think that, you know, if we have the opportunity to bring in a twenty-first century type of development to this area, uh, I think that's something we need to seriously consider. I think that if this does move forward, there are, um, expectations that we would have for the owners of the site, that, uh, it's not just a, um, you know, a clear, you know, we vote for this, and then it's done. They can do whatever we want there. There's going to be oversight. There's going to be a, a lot of, you know, taking a really hard look at these things through the conditional use, um, mechanism to ensure that what is done there is consistent with what we expect, which means noise, um, air, air quality, traffic quality. Those are things that we care about. We wanna ensure that that is what occurs here in Churchill. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next square of Hollywood Squares, uh, Norma.
Yes, I agree with what, um, Adam has said, and I thank everyone as well. I, this is a, you know, as, as many have said, a, a tough decision. But for me, the possible potential benefits to our community, um, make me feel that I at least want to explore the process and hope that we can, um, work together to have our conditions met on that possibility, and with a potential benefit, I'm willing to take that on that process and, um, hope that it can be, uh, as good as I think it might be, um, if our conditions are met.
Thank you, Norma. Uh, Hollywood Square of Don. You're, you are muted, Don.
About now? Good?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm not gonna reiterate what everyone has said, but I wanna, I wanna raise a couple of points. First of all, if we reject this text amendment, it does not preclude us from considering another text amendment in the future with more information about the potential negative health benefit, negative health effects, traffic that's gonna affect a large fraction of our community. Is it gonna affect everybody the same way? No. But there's a significant fraction of our community that are gonna be severely affected, potentially severely affected. We just don't know. We just don't have enough information. Make no mistake about it, we have one gas station in Churchill. That's it. And now we're gonna put in this three point five million square foot, you know, massive traffic, trucks, cars in the middle of the community, residential community. This, it's gonna change Churchill forever. There's no doubt about that. So you might say, well, just go ahead and let's go with the conditional use. We have that, we have that. That's gonna come later. Well, we lose a lot of leverage if we accept this, this amendment. Why? Why do I say that? Well, just look at Island Empire in California. This is a community that is, is suffering from intense air pollution due to a lot of factors. It's not just, uh, containment, uh, fulfillment centers, but they've been struggling for years to try to mitigate some of this air pollution, and, and the community is getting nowhere. So to say that we can, all of our conditions will be met, I think is a little naive right now. I just don't have enough information to say this is gonna be, that, to mitigate some of the serious health benefit, health effects, and the serious traffic, so I am not in favor.
Thank you, Don. Valerie.
I want to say thank you to everybody. It's incredible that we have ninety-four participants. COVID has brought some positive things, and I think this is a great one that a lot of, uh, Churchill residents are able to, um, share their thoughts and feelings about this in an open forum like this with the amount of people. I am newer to the council, um, pretty, pretty new, actually. I have gotten a lot of information. I have read a lot about this. I think there are a lot of positives that can come through this, um, if, um, it is voted to go forward with it. Um, like, uh, some other council members have mentioned, the, um, conditional use. I think we'll be able to, um, get some positives for our community. Um, so thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Valerie. Uh, Kevin?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I am in favor of the proposed ordinance seven fifty-five. The approval would be an important first step in establishing a working partnership with the developer and end user that will enhance our community in a number of ways. The Westinghouse site needs to be developed, and I personally know of any other way of a entity going in there and making use of that property. A well-designed and managed distribution center will increase jobs, raise tax revenue, and allow for benefits to our community centers, recreation areas, and school systems. A lot of work remains to be done to implement acceptable traffic patterns and environmental mitigation. I'm confident that these can be accomplished with assistance and advise from county, state, and federal authorities. I urge approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, Madam Vice President.
How many hours do you have? I would say thank you, first of all, for all of you participating. It is so important, uh, for us to hear what you have to say. I think, that said, you have heard tonight that there are specific issues, both pro and con, that people generally have. Uh, and I think it's important to know that, um, the council had those same questions, has those same questions. We've tried for months to nail down what the answers to those questions are. And one of the realities we've come to is the way things are done. We're, we're very, you know, independent folks here. Uh, and we're all, you know, pretty well-educated, and we have lots of questions. And, uh, what I didn't realize until this process was, what should have been obvious, but I'm not a developer. When you're talking about a project like this and getting, uh, all of the analyses and reports, uh, traffic, air, noise, all of that, what you're asking the developer to do is to do all of that before they know that there's any chance that they can go forward. And they're not willing to do that. And, uh, if I were a developer, I probably wouldn't be either. So let me cut to the point that, you know, where I was when this started. My primary concern was environmental. It still is. Um, you know, tax dollars, yes. School district, yes. Um, all of that. But for me, it was the environment. And so I started out thinking about, um, air pollution. And then I came to the realization that, um, if my big concern was air pollution and my big concern was particulates from the air pollution, it's a regional issue. This developer is gonna go someplace close to where we are and develop the facility there. So what I do or don't do with this vote is not going to have any net impact on how much particulate matter is going to go into the air as a result of trucks. So that one, I had to put aside a bit. Then I became more aware of something that I had never been aware of before, and that is what is happening to those buildings. And that is, uh, an issue and an expense that has real impact on our ability to have anybody else come in and develop that property. The buildings are very old. They are disintegrating. There is nasty stuff going into the soil. The figures that we've gotten about what it's going to cost to take down the buildings and take out the, uh, the soil that has been contaminated exceeds anything that I could possibly imagine a developer with, with more shallow pockets than this one being willing to do. We did a planning and visioning process in the spring that was very valuable. I would encourage all of you to go back to the website and loo- and look at the videos that were done at that time. There was very good work done there, very, very good conversation with the public about it. The fact of the matter is, all the things that we envisioned, you know, the Whole Foods, the workout place, the garden center, the nice little restaurant, the, the wine store, all of that, you have to have a developer that is willing to ta- spend tens and tens of millions of dollars just taking down the buildings and taking out the soil before they even begin to build what it is they think they might make a profit on. I had fantasies of all kinds, you know, about doing, um, uh, you know, extensions of the universities or doing some kind of, uh, you know, uh, startup tech thing, uh, you know, mixed use, which is what we were all talking about in the spring. That's all great, but it's not going to happen. And it's not going to happen because there's no developer that is going to come in and do that kind of thing that's gonna be willing to spend the amount of money. So, okay, let's just go forward. Let's just keep living the way we've been living. Well, uh, Alex, uh, and, and Krista in our office did an analysis about where we are financially. And many of us, myself included, have been here for decades, loving this place, wanting it to stay the same. What I've learned is that it can't stay the same. Uh, we're in a situation now financially where we're just really hanging on by our fingernails. And the reason is because of school taxes and so on. So I, I want you to know that this. So I want you to know that this is a pretty agonizing decision for me. I am going to land where I never thought I would land. But I'm landing there because I've taken a lot of time and a lot of effort with my colleagues to understand what the truth is and what the facts are. And I believe that we will have the power to do the very best that we can do to make this a real national showpiece for this kind of facility and that we will be very diligent about getting there. I can't let this go without mentioning to you that where I live is probably one of the most impacted properties that will happen in this borough. And if I were voting in my self-interest or the interest of my immediate neighbors or the other people who are going to be living around this site and on this route, I would be making a different decision. But that's not my responsibility. My responsibility is to do what I truly think is in the best interest of the borough now and in the future. So I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Which leaves it to me and my comments. To begin with, I want to thank all of council. You know, the comments made by the public, you are correct. You would hope that council would do their due diligence, that they would work hard, that they would research, that they wouldn't just simply take people at their face value. That is what your council has done for you. And they've come to their own decisions in their own spaces, and we have argued at times and had very different opinions and switched our opinions. It has been a very, very thoughtful and difficult process, quite frankly. I will tell you that, you know, in the beginning of this process, if we were forced to line up at the table and take a vote, it would have probably been, without giving anyone's name, out a 6-1 vote against. People went through a process and looked at everything from what we have control over, what are the risk levels? How do we address those? What can we address? You know, what will happen now, pre-COVID, post-COVID? There has been a lot that has gone through this process to get everyone, irrespective of where they land, to the votes that they are voting tonight. The second thing that I will say is that many of your council members, you know, are residing in the spaces that are impacted, are, you know, six houses from Lewin Lane, are in Blackridge. Are we, we are, in fact, you know, to somebody else's kind of comment, you know, there are people who won't be impacted by this. We will. Most of us will. And we understand that in making the decision. The decision process, I think, comes down to, for me, what are the options? What is the realistic kind of space? I have told many of our council people through this process. And in the beginning, I was coming up with 15,000 ways to stop this from ever happening. And I've talked to people, and I said, you know, the one thing I want to be is honest and upfront about the negatives and the positives. And I want to be honest about the negatives, and I'm not going to listen when somebody says everything's going to be terrible. And I want to be honest about the positives, and I'm not going to listen, though, to somebody who says everything's going to be wonderful. Right? Because the reality is that this is going to take, you know, a heck of a lot of work, and there are going to be difficulties, and there are going to be real challenges. And this isn't going to be perfect. But Diane made a comment that's also true. In my favorite band's quote from Rush, for those of you who haven't been Rush fans, "If you choose not to decide, you still have made a choice." And for those who want Churchill to stay the same, that is not a possibility. Churchill is going to change. How we change and what we change is a question. But we're going to change. We're going to change without revenue. We're going to change as our school district runs a formerly dollar deficit. We're going to change with traffic. We're going to change with a giant site. Somehow, we're going to change. The question for us is, what does that change look like? At this point, having talked to every council member, quite frankly, I moved from a no to a yes. And it was not an easy choice. There was a lot that went into it, a lot more than simply even Churchill. I thought about the impact on other communities around us. You know, I thought about, you know, whether or not, you know, what's going on with our school district? You know, how can I help? Somebody said about the dollar amount of the pay at those spaces. And I don't know that I'm the giant Amazon fan, just to be clear about that. I also know that our poverty level for the kids in our school district is far beyond what would ever be acceptable. And even a $15 an hour job with health insurance can change some people's lives. So I've thought through this a lot. Having said that, I'm not going to go much further on my position. I will say to all of the residents who have come to all of the meetings, and you should know, for those of you who have come through Zoom and haven't been to meetings before, when we were in person, we normally had like five people, and it was the same five people to every meeting. So the input that we're getting is far beyond anything we've ever had. Multiple meetings of this number of people over and over again. It really has been a positive experience in being able to hear the people of Churchill, along with the emails and calls and the rest that we've had. So with that, I will end my comment. I will keep this open for any other further discussion for a minute before I move it on to roll call. Is there any further discussion that people wanted to have?
If I can just, I think the issue of trees is big. A big part of our community is trees, and Ken rightly raises the issue of trees. Let me assure you. A big issue here for us is air quality, is, you know, noise barrier, is the nature of our community. And there are going to be very significant requirements having to do with ending up with more trees than we have now. So I just wanted to make that one mention. It's a big issue, and it's on our radar, trust me.
And I think while David or Gavin, I'm not sure who, still, which of our solicitors will be speaking after our roll call, I would point out that procedurally, the conditional use, if there's an application, is still a process. There is not, there is not simply, now that you pass this, you are good to go. Is there any further comment from council before I move and ask for a roll call? Hearing none. The Borough Manager, if you can proceed with the roll call.
Yes, the order is random. It was determined before the meeting, no particular order of the members. Don DeFranco?
No.
Adam McDowell?
Yes.
Kevin Collins?
Yes.
Norma Greco?
Yes.
Valerie Remphaler?
Yes.
Diane Long?
Yes.
President Jay Doran?
Yes. The motion carries 6-1. I'm going to move to, on the agenda, I believe we have kind of, just for procedurally, what the next step would be, and ask that that can be defined by the solicitor so that we can adjourn after. I know I'm on there, but I've-
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Doran. I appreciate it. And now that the amended ordinance has been passed, any applicant can now submit an application and plans to attempt to meet the criteria for conditional use that's set forward in the ordinance and the amendment. And as mentioned, you know, that will involve engineering studies, environmental studies, as listed in the ordinance. Within 60 days of the application, the council must hold a public hearing on the application. As mentioned earlier, that timeline can be extended with the consent of the developer if more information is needed. There's also a review by the Planning Commission that must occur within 45 days of the application, and site plan approval has to occur within 90 days. And again, all the conditions that are in the ordinance must be met. A lot of times, there are additional conditions that are put on an application in the conversation with the Borough Engineer and with Borough staff and council. So it will be an ongoing process, any applications that you may receive.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I just again want to thank all of council for what has been, is the beginning of a process, but has been a very difficult process for this particular vote. And I know we have more in front of us, but I just wanted to take that moment to thank you all because I know each one of you has done significant due diligence in this particular space. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening. Please stay safe and say well.
Thank you.